See Edlin. So Edlin's not going to be here who was scheduled for invocation. I'll do that in just a minute. And then we'll be led in the pledges by Councilmember Monger, who will first lead us in the pledge to the American flag and second to the Texas flag. Would you please stand? Our gracious Father in heaven, we pause at this time to express our gratitude for your manifold blessings. There are numerous, but fall into groups of financial blessings, health blessings, jobs, and family and relationships, safety, protection, and a wonderful place to live, not only as a town, but as a state and as a country. We ask for your wisdom to be with us tonight as we deliberate the business of the town. May our discussions be tempered by your guidance. May our decisions do the right thing as we feel best for the citizens of Trophy Club. And these things we ask in Jesus' name. Amen.
There are flags in the back of the room and the front of the room. Please join me in honoring our nation's flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Give me just a moment to get ready since I was busy talking. Council, remind you to speak into the microphone tonight. It is time for public comments. This is an opportunity for citizens to address the council on any matter. The council is not permitted to respond, take action, or discuss presentations made on an item not listed on the agenda. Presentations are to be limited to matters over which the council has authority. You may speak up to four minutes or a time limit determined by the presiding officer. To speak during an item, you must complete the speaker's form and include topics of your statement or submit an email to mayorandcouncil@trophyclub.org. Letty, I didn't get my email up. Do we have anybody wishing to speak? All right. Anyone in the audience wish to speak tonight? All right. Seeing no one seeking the floor, we will move on to our announcements and reports. Item number four, badge pinning ceremony for newly hired Fire Chief Jack Taylor and firefighter Jason Countryman. So Steve, you're going to take care of that.
Yes, sir. Mayor and council, this is quite a big honor for a lot of reasons. You know, when our new chief Jay Taylor got here, it was the start of COVID. So I don't think he'd been to a meeting yet. So he, this probably should have been done a few months ago. But you know, it's being done this evening and what a great hire. And it's not a great hire because I hired him. I just wanted that to sink in just for a little bit. But he's got 25 years in the fire service, Assistant Chief in Irving. And what a compliment his Fire Chief from Irving is here this evening. So that's quite a, quite a, you know, testament to Jay. And when we went through this hiring process, it was unanimous. And he brings creativity. He brings a very thoughtful, he's very social media mindful. He brought that up at Rotary here a Friday ago and got a lot of good compliments. So it is so, so wonderful to have Jay Taylor. And I know you see Jack Taylor, but he goes by Jay. He has been very innovative. And he, he had, you know, big shoes to fill. And I tell you, Wade Carroll set the standard pretty high. And this town's not going to go backwards. And you know, thanks to Wade and the department he built. And we've got a fantastic chief and Chief Taylor and glad that he's part of our organization. So Stacy, his wife, is going to pin it on him. And these are always so challenging because you never know exactly how to do it, so.
Yeah. So Jay, come on up to the front. And Tony, are you going to take pictures?
This is my wife Stacy and my boys Jack and Nick. Appreciate them being here tonight. They're actually all off work.
It's nice to see y'all not on Zoom. Congratulations.
Thank you.
So congratulations. So Victor Conley, is that, did I say your last name right? Is the Fire Chief at Irving? Did you want to say anything? Anything that you could kind of tell us about him? We would really appreciate knowing.
Y'all really need to clear this before you.
So this is my moment.
Oh, man, he wrote a speech.
Yeah, actually I did. Mayor Sanders, council, city manager Norwood, Assistant City Manager Carroll, staff. First of all, I want to thank you for giving me an opportunity to come before your council and share a few things about my good friend, my ex-Assistant Chief, and your chief for the Town of Trophy Club, Jack J. Taylor. And what I want to present to you, he doesn't really know what's going on. So if he looks confused, it's because he is.
I think he looked confused all the time.
So Chief Taylor, what I want to share with you tonight, Chief Taylor recently graduated from the Executive Fire Officer Program back in November of 19. And just in case you don't know the significance of that, the National Fire Academy was created back in 1973 under the Nixon administration in a report given to Congress called "America is Burning." And what spawned out of that report during that time was the National Fire Academy. At the time was under FEMA, but has recently moved under Homeland Security and the US Department of Fire Administration. It's operated and governed by the USFA. Now then, what I want to share with you is one of the preeminent training facilities for fire officers all over the United States and actually the world. We had officers as far as Australia, Britain, Brazil, come to this academy to learn what we had to offer here in America. Part of that program back in 1979, and I won't bring you year by year, I'm going to jump real quick here. But in 79, the Executive Fire Officer Program was developed to help our fire officers succeed in the executive world by creating research papers and results based upon problems within their community or their department. And I assure you, some of these topics are extremely, extremely specific. And Chief Taylor has written papers on four of them. It's a four-year program. You go to the academy for two weeks, you've got six months to write a research paper, and they judge that research paper on content and how it's written. Average length is about 60 pages. They publish them in the National Fire Academy Library if you make over a 3.2.0, right? 3.0. Chief Taylor completed that program back in November of 19. Less than 1% of the fire officers in this country get accepted into that program. That's how significant the program is. More than 50% drop out of it before it's ever completed. Your Fire Chief completed that program. So not only are you getting a good guy, and I'll tell you, I'm going to share something with you right quick. He is extremely unique. And I did this at his retirement ceremony. I have firefighters that are extremely detailed and somewhat sensitive at times. This guy is extremely detailed and happy-go-lucky, which is not a normal characteristic or trait of firefighters. He will excel your city in the fire department realm. He will promote it progressively. You'll be, you will not look back upon this day and be sorry. I promise you. If you do, you can hold me accountable. This guy worked for me six years, and there wasn't a time I was disappointed in him. He always exceeded my expectations. I've pretty much covered everything in here and to keep from wasting your time, but also to give recognition to Chief Taylor for his accomplishment. And I think he would vouch and second my thoughts here that the program at the National Fire Academy and specifically the Executive Fire Officer Program has done nothing but enhance his career as a chief officer. And what he didn't know, this is the funny part, I slipped in his office back when he was trying to move out. And I got this out of his tube, which you wondered where this was, didn't you? Yeah. It comes in a tube, and they actually want the mayor or city manager to present this. And after communicating with your city manager, he said, I think it'd be good if you did it. So I took it out of his tube, had it framed for him, and I've been sitting on it ever since he left Irving back March 26th. Now, he went to his wife and said, where is my lambskin, right? I had it the whole time, and he didn't know it. So if you will, let's congratulate Chief Jack J. Taylor on this accomplishment. He's going to make you an excellent Fire Chief, and he's a great friend of mine. So I'll vouch for him anytime. And if he screws up, call me back. I'll stand and account for him. Okay? Thank you.
I even knew what box I put that in, and it wasn't in there, so I didn't know what that. Thank you very much.
I'm trying, I'm going to.
We won't touch you?
I'm going to stand on this side.
Okay.
Okay. You sure?
It's kind of going down. Congratulations. I will shake your hand. Thank you so much.
Absolutely, sir. Thank you for giving me that opportunity.
Absolutely. You can say maybe four.
First of all, I want to say it's a little bit belated. I started on March 30th. And we had a crisis on our hands, and we're still dealing with that every day. This changes from this point forward, how we're going to respond from an EMS perspective, from a fire perspective. Everything that we do has changed. And we're going to see how much that evolves as we progress through this. But I want to thank Steve for taking a chance with me. I want to thank all of y'all. The leadership in this town, I did a tremendous amount of research, and I am pretty detailed. And sometimes it's probably a little bit too much, but I did a tremendous amount of research on this community. The more I looked at it, the more I fell in love with it. And the more I fell in love with it, I realized, I told Stacy, I said, this is the place. I said, I'm going after it. And you know, God's grace, that's what worked out for me. But we've got a tremendous staff here, as you can see, and it'll be indicated in a few minutes when we talk about an award that we've recently received. But quarterback's only as good as his players around him, his offensive line. And I've got a great crew around me that they've already made me look good. And we're going to continue to raise the bar. We're going to find ways to do that. We have some things that are coming down the pike this summer that I can't share yet that I think are going to be really exciting for the department and the town. But we're going to continue raising that bar. I want to thank Chief Conley and his wife Shanae, who Shanae's the City Secretary for Irving. And so they're great friends of ours. Victor talks about how good of friends we are, but he's prepared me for this and the things that we've done together. So I'm excited. I'm ready for this, and we're just going to keep moving on. So I'm going to, enough about me. I want to thank Steve, and I want to bring firefighter Jason Countryman up here. I'm going to go to the next phase of this pinning, and I'll call, no, go ahead. Y'all can all come up. Firefighter Countryman has a lot of experience. He came from Crowley Fire Department, has been a part-time firefighter for us. And as you know, we have our staff of professional firefighters here in Trophy Club that also supplement our staff with part-time personnel. They're professional firefighters that are paramedics as well from surrounding departments that come here and work on a part-time basis. It works great to supplement our staff, and it also benefits them as well. But it gives us a high level of professionalism, not only with our staff, but the part-time personnel that we bring in here. We're just as hard on the selection process with our part-time personnel as we are our full-time personnel because they fit into our Trophy Club culture and they grow with us. So we want to make sure that they have the right mindset, and they're going to represent this community in the way that we want them to represent us and represent our residents as well. Firefighter Countryman was one of those part-time firefighters who did a tremendous job for us. And we actually, Wade, as Chief Carroll started the process, and I fully believe in it, but we look at our part-time personnel first because if we don't have quality personnel in our part-time staff, then we're doing something wrong as an administration and not bringing the right people forward. So before we went outside to look, we checked with our personnel, and we had some select few that we wanted to interview within the part-time personnel. Jason ended up being the selection for us to bring in as a full-time firefighter. Fits right in because he fits in the culture of what we do. As a professional firefighter, there's a lot that we go through to get trained, to get up to snuff. He's learning the culture of Trophy Club Fire Department. We're going through that process right now. But the badge pinning is very sacred and very dear to a firefighter. And what that tells you is you're now part of the team. If you're a Dallas Cowboy, you've got the star now. You're not just practicing in a silver helmet during two days. You've got the star. You've earned that star. We've earned that badge. He has earned that badge now, and he's going to take that on to the rest of his career. And he's going to help the rest of us raise the bar of what we do as a Trophy Club Fire Department. So I want to be the first, congratulate firefighter Countryman, and introduce his wife Jennifer and son Kobe. Jennifer's going to pin him, and I have the badge in mind. But I want to congratulate you as becoming part of our team. And now's when the fun starts. All the work is going to continue, but you're going to be looked upon not only as a leader in the department, but also somebody that represents our fire department going into the future. So we can have leaders at every level. Doesn't matter if you're an officer or firefighter. We all lead by example. And I expect you to continue that legacy and push forward to make us all better. We're going to make you better, and you're going to make us better, right?
Yes, sir. Absolutely.
It's a pleasure.
Thanks, sir.
Congratulations. I'm going to allow Jennifer to do the duty here. If you'd like to draw blood, that's fine as well.
Jay, before your team leaves, I figure they're going to cut out of here any minute.
I thought they wanted to stay.
You think they want to stay all evening? I don't think so, but okay. We're glad that you chose Trophy Club. We're glad you moved here. Glad to have you on board. I think I speak for the entire council and the residents of Trophy Club is that we don't have anybody in the area that's as good as our men and women of Trophy Club Fire Department. They are outstanding. They excel, and they do so by making the citizens feel comfortable and confident that they're there to help them and are going to make the right decisions. I always look forward to when I get an email or a phone call from someone who has probably been through something not the most pleasant in the world, and that's an emergency. And they're calling to compliment the men and women of the department. And so it is a big standard to get to. And as we've grown substantially over the last 10 years, that's always been a concern. Can we maintain that family environment? And I would hope that all of the firemen and EMT people feel like this is their home, even though they don't live here, that the people care about them, care about their families, their well-being, and appreciate everything that they do. So on behalf of all of us, thank you so much for all the stuff that y'all do day in, day out to keep us safe. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And you know, during the COVID, with the lockdown of the fire station, not being able to get out and have the outreach that we normally have, there've been several of them on a daily basis, especially lately, just chomping at the bit to get out there and get back within our community and see our residents. They said, we want to go see our people. We want to see the residents because they miss doing that and hadn't had the opportunity to get with the kids in the school this spring. The things that we like to do and get out to the parks and get out to the baseball games. So we're looking forward to that opening back up. But they're all in. They're 100% in, and I'm right behind them. So it's just going to continue to get better and better.
Okay. I feel I'm getting sick on the way home right now. I might have to call 911. Y'all couldn't hear that, I hope. You didn't send it in the microphone. I was already a frequent flyer. Yeah, well, we won't go there. But you know, not every time that I've needed somebody was Trophy Club there for me. We won't go there either, will we, Chief? All right. But everybody's here with me, so I appreciate that. Anything else? You ready for your next item, Steve?
Sure.
Okay. Item number five, receive Town Manager Norwood's update and provide input regarding the following. Meadowbrook Lane update, American Heart Association mission, lifelines, gold award for Trophy Club Fire Department. And I see that we have someone from the American Heart Association joining us via electronic media. Welcome to Trophy Club in our meeting.
Yes, thank you. So I was actually able to celebrate with you guys in person last year when you earned the silver award. But I am here virtually. I thank you guys for accommodating me. I actually, I am recovering from a stroke that I had on May 15th of this year, so about six weeks ago. So due to COVID, I'm locked down for my safety, but I appreciate that you guys are letting me still participate in your celebration tonight. You guys are definitely lucky to have Chief Taylor. I've worked with him when he was with Irving. And he is truly wonderful to work with. And I know you guys definitely made the right decision in bringing him to Trophy Club. So the reason that I'm here tonight, as I mentioned, last year Trophy Club, the Town of Trophy Club, earned a silver award with the American Heart Association. And what that means is that they were able to maintain the standards of care or above for all of their STEMI patients for an entire year. So for those of you that aren't medical, a STEMI patient, that's going to be your patient that has a heart attack that registers an ST elevation on their ECG. So it's a very specialized type of heart attack that they see in the field. And so what's important about these STEMI patients is that when you call 911, the care that you receive starts the minute that that fire department and your EMS workers show up to that patient. They're able to get an EKG immediately. They're able to call ahead to the hospital. They're able to actually diagnose and start treating in the field. And that's what's happening right there in your Town of Trophy Club. And so they have done a phenomenal job. Like I said, we recognized last year with a silver plus award. And I'm really excited to announce that this year, the Town of Trophy Club has earned the gold plus recognition for STEMI care of patients. And what that means is that they've been able to meet the standards consistently for two straight years. So that really deserves a big round of applause to the men and women of the Town of Trophy Fire Department. The work that you're doing is truly seen with the outcomes that you're having and with your ability to be able to main the highest standards of care for all of your patients. So what that means for you, mayor, and city council members, and those of you, I can't see the audience, but I'm assuming there's other people out there as well, know that when you call 911, the people that are coming to respond to the scene, they're going to make sure that you get to the right place at the right time to get the right care. And that's truly, truly an outstanding accomplishment by the men and women of your fire department. So if you would, welcome Chief Taylor back up, and I'd like everyone to give a big round of applause if there's other members of the fire department. I'd love to be able to see you guys and wave virtually and congratulate you for your outstanding achievement as a gold plus recognized agency.
So we're going to let you see them.
Oh, yes.
There we are. Thank you, Christie.
Congratulations. You will have your updated plaque plate for your plaque here shortly. Oh, thank you so much.
Well, absolutely. Thank you, Christie. We appreciate you being here, and we appreciate your passion for what you do. STEMI, as we talked about, and Steve loves the term ST elevated myocardial infarction. I keep trying to get him to say that, but he just likes to say heart attack. It's a tribute. I mentioned earlier, I don't know if you heard it, Christie, but I talked about these guys make me look good. They're the ones that do this work. We make sure they're trained, but they're the ones that have the passion for doing the training right and making sure that they represent our department and give our residents the best treatment they can possibly get every day, day in and day out. They look for the creative ways. We're under the best EMS protocols, very progressive. We do a lot of unique things in that program, and it allows us to do a lot of things to save lives. Just had one last Wednesday. We had a successful STEMI last Wednesday, and the guys did an outstanding job. It was actually this crew that did that. So they're just a direct reflection of that. Very proud of them, this entire staff, all three shifts, everybody that we put on the streets. They're here to serve our community, and we're very proud of them. So we thank you very much, Christie.
That's phenomenal. I'm a data girl, so the data shows that you guys are doing what you're supposed to do and then some. So it's wonderful to be able to celebrate with you tonight.
Thank you, Christie.
Thank you.
Thank you. Steve, did you want to say anything? This was your item.
Yes. No, it's, I think it's just a great compliment, and I think the citizens of Trophy Club expect this level of service. And we're fortunate that we can provide that level of service, not only through your direction as far as funding the quality of equipment that we have, but also paying the men and women of Trophy Club Fire Department. And we do have some of the best. And thanks to Chief Carroll, to Chief Taylor. You know, we do have a great group, and I think our citizens know that and realize that. So thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you. Thank you. You still have the floor, Steve, for another item.
Yes, just briefly, Meadowbrook Lane, that was brought up a little bit during our work session. That project is not the full project. It is part of a project that will be expanded in following years. But we are getting ready to start getting into the, I guess, the more, I guess, construction-related, if you will. Next week, they should be taking up pavement. They're a few weeks behind. Weather has not been helpful the last week or so, but they are in the process of moving forward. But again, anytime you're in a heavy residential area, there's a lot of obstacles that go along. But it is a project that's needed, and it will continue on in future years. But this is phase one.
Thanks, Steve. While we're on reports, I just wanted to give a brief update. Is that certificate of occupancies have been issued for Anamias Tex-Mex Restaurant, David Ryan Salon, Phase One of the Byron Apartment Homes and Three Boat Gym at Trophy Club Town Center. They're not open yet, but at this point, they're working on the final things to get there. And I just thought council would like to know where we stand on that. Anything else? Did I miss anything on that?
No, sir.
All right. All right. Any questions that you have for Town Manager? All right. Seeing no one wishing the floor, we will move on to our consent agenda. All matters listed on the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the Town Council and will be enacted by one motion. There will not be a separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Any member of council want to remove any of the items six through eight? Seeing no one wishing to do so, would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Make a motion to approve consent agenda items six, seven, and eight.
Second. I have a motion by Councilmember Bone, a second by Councilmember Jerosi. All in favor, show your hands. It is unanimous. We're down to item number nine, take appropriate action regarding the interlocal agreement for fleet services for the Trophy Club Fire Department. Town Manager Norwood, you've got this one, too.
Well, I'm going to let Chief Taylor talk about this since it's been his meeting for most of the night. I figured he, you'll probably want to talk about refunding bonds here on the next agenda item. But this is, this is a great, great thing. And thanks to Chief Taylor for pursuing this. This is an interlocal with the city of Watauga. This is an interlocal with the City of Watauga to work on our fire equipment. And not only will it save money, but the turnaround time is just amazing. So I won't take too much of your bubble. Just don't get too far off into the refunding issue on the next item.
Mayor Sanders and council, you covered it all. So that was pretty much it. Our fleet services, we had an opportunity to look outside and get a little bit creative with how our fleet are maintained and repaired. Currently with our big fire apparatus, the company that we use for our repair, they're basically like a dealer would be for a Ford or Chevy. It's that dealership. And that's where we take our equipment up to Denton to get maintained and repaired. There are a couple of issues that we've had ongoing, and I've experienced this through the years in my previous department, was that there are a lot of high costs in that, a lot of high labor costs. But the biggest thing, especially for this department and the size of our department, is the timeframe that our equipment is gone from us. We just had truck 681 away from us for a month for just a minor repair. And it caused us to start looking outside and thinking outside the box a little bit. We got in contact with Watauga, the City of Watauga, they have a fleet service there. They're wanting to build that and be aggressive with it. They have three emergency vehicle technicians on staff, one of which has won a national award for being the best at repairing Pierce equipment, which is what our fire equipment is that we run on the roads every day. So they're a very highly trained, very passionate team about what they do. And the City of Watauga wants to expand that program and they invited us to look at them, to bring our fleet services to them. It was a perfect marriage for us. It's going to save us money on every aspect of it. There's really only one thing that's the same cost we had before, but everything else is less. But the time factor is the biggest thing because we can't afford to have as much downtime as we've experienced in the past and not have another piece of equipment that goes down and we're completely out. So they have the ability to get that equipment to us a lot quicker. It'll save us money, could save us a lot of money, especially when repairs come down the pike that we can't foresee because of the reduced labor cost.
All right, thank you.
Sure.
So any questions that you have or would someone like to make a motion to approve item number nine?
Actually, Phillip's asking to speak.
Yeah.
I'm sorry. How long is the agreement?
Go ahead.
Is it one year, multiple years?
It's on yearly, it's 12 months. And it can be canceled by a written notification, but it re, the first of each fiscal year, the start of that fiscal year, it re-ups automatically. So if we approve this, it'll go to the duration of this fiscal year and then we'd automatically pick up on October 1st and continue until we, if we chose to give written notice at some point.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve interlocal agreement for fleet services for the Trophy Club Fire Department. Second.
Thank you. I think Bone seconded. Multiple seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor, show your hands. If all oppose, same sign, it is unanimous. Item 10, presentation by SAMCO, the town's financial advisor, on refunding some of the town's currently outstanding debt for interest rate savings and authorizing town staff and financial advisor to proceed with the refunding. Steve, this is yours and let's introduce Mark McLean, please. He's here also. Mark?
Thank you. Go ahead.
I thought Mark retired.
No. I've got young kids. Steve, Wade, Mike.
He looks like him.
My name's Mark McLean with SAMCO Capital Markets. Worked with you all for some time on your borrowings. This is the first time I've been in council chambers
That's why I thought you were.
since the previous council and it's beautiful. I've been in meetings with the staff, but this is the first time here and it looks beautiful. I'm proud to be involved in the financing for it. Really, we wanted to just show an opportunity to refund some bonds. There is a, I believe it's in your packets. You have a, two bonds that were sold in 2010. And when we sold them at the time, we said we could take them from the investors in 2020. Well, you're probably familiar with what's going on with the interest rates. We're hitting all time lows again. And so what we want to do is take them from the investor. In order to get the money to take them from the investor, we issue refunding bonds, use those proceeds and pay them off. You can see on the bottom left chart that it's a little bit unusual, but you're seeing a $195,000 loss in year one and then $60,000 a year for a total of $350,000 of savings. The reason we are looking at a loss and we're just comparing this only to the existing bonds versus this new bonds, is you have some other bonds that are going away and we're using that opportunity to pay off these bonds a little bit quicker, keeping your current INS tax rate at the exact level that it has been since 2014. So in reality, we're going to pay a little more on this new bond as we would if we did nothing and then generate the savings over those next eight years, nine years, giving you all more capacity in the future based off of your 11 cent INS tax rate. If you all want to go forward, and these numbers were done about a week ago, conservatively speaking, I was sharing with Mike today, we sold some bonds at City of Uvalde, that if I use this scale, the savings would be over $400,000. So it's real money, savings are after cost of issuance. What we want to do is get permission from you all to move forward and start looking at this refunding. The idea would come back August 11th at a regular council meeting with final interest rates for a bond sale. If they're sufficient, you all would authorize it and we would close September 15th.
All right, thank you. I'll move that we authorize you to move forward with the funding. Do I get a second?
Second.
All right. So Sanders moved, Monger seconded. So do we have two questions?
Yes, sir.
If I look at the chart and where it lists the GEO Refunding Bond Series 2010, and to the right it says par refunded $410,000. So was that original finish date that it was paid off 2022? If you look at that line?
Yes. We are not extending anything. So you have two bonds from 2010. The GEO Bonds 2010, original maturity went to 2030. The one you're speaking of, we sold in 2010. It was a refunding bond and it only has two more years to go.
Okay.
You're correct on that.
So you're not extending it?
No. You'll see below, in the box below, if you look at the existing debt service, the first two years are $590,000 and then it drops to $378. That larger first two payments are because there's two bonds there. In the second column, you'll see the first payment, $787, because we have more capacity, we're going to pay it off quicker. Second is $531 and then each one is $317. So we're not stretching anything. In fact, we're paying them off a little bit quicker.
Okay, good.
I didn't suggest or I didn't show, these numbers show future bond issue about $183. I think we'd be sub one and a half in today's market. I don't know where we'll be in August when we get bids, but this is conservative speaking. So I think we will generate more closer to $400 or $400-plus thousand dollars.
All right, thank you. So next question will probably will be Mike, having to answer. Given the fact that we are accomplishing this and leaving our INS at 11 cents, part of that is because we weren't necessarily going to use all the 11 cents even though we set that as the tax rate. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Our existing would have had it a little bit lower than the 11 cents and we just wanted to maintain at the 11. It's also opening a little bit of opportunity for police to be able to buy equipment through the CCPD instead of making their contribution to debt service.
Okay, good. I'm glad you brought that up. And so is there any additional unused balance of the 11 cents after this? Or have we used all of that 11 cents?
Mark and I have discussed the fact that we will use the whole 11 cents in this year.
Okay.
And then the operating and maintenance tax rate, we'll discuss and work through the truth in taxation. And we realize that it will, it should be just a touch lower than the existing.
All right, great. Anybody else have any questions? I don't see anyone wishing to speak. All in favor of item number 10 to refund the bonds, show your hands. All opposed, same sign, it is unanimous.
Thank you all very much and we'll be back August 11th and be working with the staff to get this thing completed.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so we're on item number 11, I believe. Let me make sure I'm not messing it up. And review and provide direction to staff on future agenda items. You received as a handout in our workshop session, council, a couple of pages titled Future Agenda Items. And in essence, Steve has taken all of those that we had on the list and we've now got a new list. You want to talk about it and take us through it, Steve?
Sure. You've got about eight, 10 items there on that list that have been on there. Some have been on there quite a few years. We've given you kind of a reader's digest version, so to speak, of where we stand. But going forward, what we'd like to do is when an item gets suggested, within two weeks, a month at the longest, we get you back a report, email, what have you, that goes over the topic that you've requested information on. And if you want to pursue it further, then we can bring it back, give you more information. Or the information that we present to you may be enough. And it doesn't sit there on the list for months after months after months. And there's some items that have been on the list for three, four years or longer. And I think if there's an item that you want to discuss within two to four weeks, you should have that information. And most times, I think it will be sufficient. If not, then you can request us to dig a little deeper. So trying to make this a lot simpler and not giving you, you know, 14 updates on each item. Let's get you the update ASAP and then either be done with it or keep it on the list. So that's, and again, I know we just handed this out to you this evening. So if you want to digest that, I'd like to have this on the agenda once a month. Just if there's any items and we may have two items to add, we may have none or we may take some of them off because you got a report or an email that spoke to that. So that's, again, we're just trying to make this a lot easier, a lot simpler and much more concise.
All right, thank you. Anybody have any questions before we add anything or take away? Anybody have questions? Phillip, if this software, if it just deemed at me, I'd know what to do. You'd think I'd know it after about six years, but anyway.
So I like this idea. What, so a couple of questions. If, if somebody requests something, so I assume that we do the same process. Somebody makes a request. You then take those items, research it, and you schedule a report for council. You bring that back to council or like an email type of report?
The plan would be just to send you an email.
Okay, so to have that item actually come to an agenda requires either the mayor or two council members. So would you be looking for input like that to then put it on the agenda?
No, I'll put it on the agenda just so that you have it. Because again, my plan is to have this monthly and so I can put any item on the agenda.
Okay.
So if I send you an email, you know, a week earlier, it will be back on the agenda in case there's anything that you want to discuss further.
Well, what I'm saying is, so let's say that I brought up, you know, I wanted to give $5,000 to every resident. That's a future agenda. Let's say that I brought that up. And obviously I got, obviously I got no support. So you go back, I mean, obviously that doesn't take much research, but you bring back, this is the reasons we can't do this, you email that to council. And I'm the only one that says, no, I want to move forward. So do you bring that back to the agenda or do you just drop it and say there was not support for the item?
No, it would be back on your list on that agenda and odds are there's probably not going to be a lot of discussion
Okay.
on it. I mean, you may have brought that up, but if there's nobody else willing to talk about it, then everybody got the information on the $5,000 per resident.
Okay.
And it's done.
Okay. And then the other items that take a significant time, you would just tell us that those items are going to take this long?
And it's the same fashion. That gets brought up and you say, okay, I understand. I'm interested in you guys pursuing that a little further. You know, if it takes a few thousand dollars of engineering or whatever it is, proceed on. But you're going to get, you're going to get information on anything that's discussed or brought up and then have the opportunity to either say go or no go.
So these items that just linger, like you're talking about, which I agree have been a problem for, you know, ever since I got on council before even Nick, and we took a lot of those off when a lot of us got elected. Do you leave those? So let's take, for example, entryway monuments that have come up and come up and come up. Do you leave that on future agenda or how do we, how do we, you know, realize that that's still on there, that that's not on there? How do we deal with that?
Well, it will stay on there until we, using that example, until we authorize a contract to go build monument sites.
Okay.
But, you know, but you guys are going to decide what stays on. If there's no interest, then I'm going to take it off.
Well, I think that, so one of the things that we did was that 90-day look. So in other words, something would just stay on there and nobody ever brought it back. It just, it just floundered, you know? And that's when we thought, well, okay, how do we solve this problem? And one of the solutions that we came up with, for lack of a better solution, is every 90 days it just has to come up so that we, it's brought to staff's attention, it's brought to council and we have to talk about, we're down, you know, we have to deal with it either like we did with entryway monuments, keep kicking it down the road. So that's what, that's the only thing that I worry about is how do we, how do we deal with items like that? That just stay on the future agenda but never, you know, staff forgets about it, council forgets about it. It just languishes there.
Well, staff's not going to forget about it. So if it stays and languishes on the agenda, that's going to be because of you guys. It's not going to be because of staff.
Okay.
So you guys have the ultimate say on that item. But I don't have any interest in keeping items going for 90 days, 120 days, a year.
So I guess the answer then is if you have updates, you will bring them?
Absolutely.
Okay, and then perhaps we can deal with it and, you know?
Right.
Okay.
So to go along with what Phillip was asking, if this comeback comes back once a month, will it be a complete list?
Yes.
So Phillip, it would be on our agenda and someone could say, I want to put this on next week's, I mean, next month's agenda, item number two. So you could kind of request it to be placed there if you wanted to because it would be in front of you.
Yeah, the worry I have is just like, take an entryway, we've had several. I think you had one on and, you know, that really there was no information, no new information, but you didn't want to forget about it. And so my concern is that anything that staff has that, you know, at that next opportunity, whether it be that once a month or whatever, that it's brought to us so we can, because my goal is to clear these, you know? I don't want them to stay on there and just month after month after month, you know? If we can clear them or if there's no interest, let's remove them and clear this list as quickly as possible.
Well, you said it better than I did, so I agree.
All right, so I had my name in to speak and then I'll go to the two other people that wanted to speak. So item number seven on your sheet is an item dealing with rules of procedure. It's something we discussed, putting there to do some clarification. And so tonight, I would like to add a B under that. That is dealing with how we process and issue proclamations. And this brings us then to another part of what our rules of procedure were not clear about. If I request something on rules of procedure, does it, I mean, if I request something to be on our future agenda item, can I do it alone? And if somebody else on council does it, does it require? And if somebody else on council does it, does it require a second person to support it before you do research?
On the agenda, or what?
On this list.
On the future agenda item?
On the future agenda list. Phillip wants to add an item. He says he wants to add it. Do we add it because he wanted it, or does he need another council member to support adding it before you do research?
Not, not on future agenda.
That's up to you guys. I mean, I, if, if Councilman Schaffner wants something on there, I'm gonna research it.
Okay.
I'm gonna get you the information, so.
Oh, you're saying in the rules of procedure?
In the rules of procedure.
Do we want to change that?
Should that be clear, that a council person can place something on the future agenda list without having another council person support it? Because our charter doesn't allow you to put it on the agenda without a second council person. I just want it really clear, so we don't get in a debate someday. So that's the reason I'm saying.
Right.
It maybe should be dealt with, how we deal with this.
But the agenda item that would be posted would be discussion of future agenda items.
That is correct.
So it's not gonna be specific to what council member?
The rules of procedure now are clear. The rules of procedure say that a council member can place something on future agenda. It just is, it goes back to the charter for the actual agenda. And what we've never dealt with is that, that divide there between future agenda and agenda. How do we deal with that? Because you may not necessarily have two people.
All right, and so Michael wanted to speak.
I think at this point, it's really time for clarification. I guess one of the things when it comes to taking things off of this future agenda item list here, moving it over to agenda items, like you used, both of you used the examples, like the monument signs, that would be one of the things that we would just move over to the CIP projects we talked about earlier in the work session, correct? So some of the things here would actually fall under, we have it on this list, but it's gonna potentially be filtered over to one of our existing processes that we have in order to?
That's correct. You could push it to your CIP, you could push it to the budget process, you could push it to, to wherever you want.
I mean, I mean, I looked through this list here, and it's, in my opinion, a lot of these things here, whether it's dealing with it in another work session, or having it under the budget review, and, and we could probably clear out a lot of these things here in the next few months.
No, I agree.
And, and have it allocated somewhere, whether it's in the 2021 budget, or we're setting it on the shelf to address '22 or later, like we talked earlier. But that's, I'm sure I was understanding you exactly, so thanks.
Okay.
All right, Sean?
Going back to the future agenda, agenda item list, so my thought is we follow what our charter says. And my, where I'm coming from that is if I can't garner support from one of my colleagues on council, then I don't really want staff working on it and wasting time and resources on it. That's just my thought. I need to be a better salesman.
Phillip?
Whatever my item is.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You're good.
Yeah, no, and I think that we could deal with it in rules of procedure, you know, when we open that up. And to go along with, with what Nick said on B, or wanting to add B, I, I've always thought that the mayor should be able to do a, what do you call it, Nick?
Proclamation.
But is it, is it proclamation, the thing that you were wanting to do outside of council a couple months ago? Do you remember? Was it a proclamation?
We named it different, so that it wouldn't be a proclamation.
Yeah.
And I think it was a resolution.
Or something. But so I've, so Letty, when you look at this and come back to issue in wait, I've always thought that the mayor should be able to do that outside of council in case there's something, you know, that comes up and you don't have time for council. The mayor should have that authority to, to do proclamations, or to do something that you present to somebody that doesn't require the decorum of council to do that. And I don't think we have that ability now, or, or we have to reword it. So maybe bring that back to us.
So it just needs to be clear, we had an example just a day ago.
Oh.
Which was the second one in the last 60 days. So we have for several years recognized, everyone loved everyone as a proclamation and made it Everyone Loves Everyone Day. Well, we're too late to get it on this agenda. It would be too late for our normal day that we do it at the next agenda. So how do we get it done if we wanted to do that? A solution will be, well, we won't make it a day, maybe we'll make it a month or something recognition. But then that reminded me, well, how do we do it when the weird circumstance happens? Someone comes from the American Heart Association, says, would y'all do a proclamation? I need it by this date. I'm sorry, we canceled our second meeting in November, we can't get it done in time for you. So that's kind of the idea, and I don't know whether it is called a proclamation, or it's called something else, but that's, I tried to add it as proclamation, just so we could deal with it. And Letty could probably help us what other cities do.
Yes, um, yes, thank you. So with regards to proclamations, you as the presiding officer have the authority to issue proclamations whenever you need. Council action is not required on proclamations. It never has been. It's just been a tradition here that they list it on the agenda and take formal action, which is not required. In other cities, we had bukooza proclamations that never even made the agenda, just because of what you said. It's too late for the past meeting, it's gonna be too late for the next meeting, so in between, what the mayor does and has the authority to do as mayor is issue those proclamations as needed. I do want to remind you, during COVID, there was one that came up for mental health or mental illness awareness, and we did that on behalf of the council. The mayor couldn't be here, so I did have his electronic signature placed on it and sent it off. So it's, it's very well-known that the mayor can do this.
We don't even need you.
Now that she has my electronic signature.
She has mine, too. I wasn't gonna say anything.
I have yours. So, so it can be done without it coming to the council meeting. The only reason they do come before council is for recognition and to provide that prominence of that event that is upcoming to the community.
Thank you very much, Letty. Appreciate that. So I put my name on the speak list, partly because I just wanted to chime in on what Sean said. What, the reason I brought up that issue of how does it go on future agenda if you don't have the support of at least one other person? And the only reason was, if staff is gonna start working on it, then is there enough support to even work on it?
Right. No, I agree with that.
And that's kind of my point. So Phillip might say, I want to do something, and the rest of us go, that's, you know, I don't.
That's brilliant. That's brilliant.
So, so we just are real quiet and don't say a thing. And then Phillip looks at us and remembers that, that he may not support the next one. So anyway, no, I'm just kidding.
Yeah.
All right, so that was the reason I brought it up. I don't know that that's the best solution. I'm okay either way, but I just want it documented.
Yeah.
In our rules. Does that make sense? Okay. Anything else about rules of procedure, not rules of procedure, future agenda list that we're on? All right, I don't see that anything else is on the agenda. So before I go further, I don't have anything for us to go into executive session. Does anybody on council wish to have an executive session? Seeing no one wishing to speak, we will then not go into executive session, and it is 7:59, and we are adjourned.